Which brings us to item 3A, selection of board officers. I'll need a motion.
All right, Madam President, I move that the board approve the selection of the Board of Trustees officers for the 2018-19 school year as follows. Charles Cunningham is president, Nancy Morrison is vice president, Robert Sitton is secretary, Martina Lamond Dixon as parliamentarian.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Those in favor? That's unanimous. Now if there are no objections, we'll take a brief recess to reorganize. There being none, we'll take a brief recess.
Next on the agenda, we will go into our assignment of board committees. Make sure I've got this here. Where do I see it? Yeah. Okay. Uh huh, there it is, right there. Okay, we're making it easy here. All right. I have asked the following board members to serve on the following committees for the year 2018-2019 year. And I'll go ahead and just read those committees. Our committee, that'll be Charles Cunningham Chair, Ms. Dixon, and Ms. Conrad. Board Superintendent Evaluation Committee will be Mr. Lopez, Ms. Morrison, Mr. Carney, Building and Planning. Ms. Lamond Dixon Chair, Mr. Sitton. Ms. Conrad, Finance Committee, Mr. Robert Sitton Chair, Charles Cunningham and Mr. Carney. Advocacy Committee, Ms. Nancy Morrison Chair, Charles Cunningham and Robert Sitton. Board Representation for the Education Foundation, Mr. Colin Carney. And Kingwood Super Neighborhood Council, Ms. Martina Lamond Dixon. Tasby Delegate and Alternates, Charles Cunningham and Nancy Morrison. Ms. Dixon, if I can, have that in a motion, please?
I move that the board approve the committee appointments for 2018-2019.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. All have heard the motion, all in favor? All opposed by the same? Motion carries. Moving on to the opening items here, and we will go into our welcome and introductions. Board Administration, let's see if we've got this here. Just a little bit now. I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. Just a reminder that the meeting of the boards are open to the public but are not public meetings. The UMBL ISD Board of Trustees meets monthly in a regular meeting. We receive reports from staff to take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The board does not receive, the board does receive an agenda on all supporting documents several days in advance of regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many questions. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meet, of tonight's meeting. There are students and other guests present. To remain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disrupted behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, we will move on into our first item, and that's going to be our pledge. We'd ask that you all would please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Not a Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. And if you would please remain standing for a moment of silence. Right, thank you. You may be seated. Uh oh.
Lots of bells up here.
Move. Moving, moving, moving. Uh huh. All right, next we'll go into our accommodations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan?
Thank you. UMBL ISD is fortunate to have the very best teachers. Tonight's inspiring moments video takes us into the classrooms of two of our superstars, Daniel Green, our Secondary Teacher of the Year, and Amanda Kopp, our Elementary Teacher of the Year, who is also serving as our District Teacher of the Year. Jonathan Fry, please play tonight's inspiring moment.
The winner of the trip to Florida and UMBL ISD Secondary Teacher of the Year is Daniel Green.
When it gets close to Mr. Green's class, I automatically think, oh yay, we're gonna do something fun in there. He involves our units with games, and we get to go outside, and sometimes we get to go outside and learn.
I think that learning should be fun. I don't think that it's always meant to be entertaining or has to be entertaining. And some kids don't want to be entertained. Some kids want the quiet time to sit, and you have to provide that opportunity for them, just like you have to provide the hands-on activity for the tactile learner.
He implants his learning with happiness, so it's not boring.
I always have my kids take a learning styles test, and then it gives them some feedback about what types of activities they will enjoy and how to study and prepare.
When you get like games and like our unit involved together, like it gets me more focused about that unit. His attitude is so positive, and it reflects on everybody in the classroom.
He has a shirt up on his board that says, "Make others better." If you're trying to do something and like somebody else is lacking in that area, bring them with you, help them.
When I first started teaching, it was much more, you know, lecture and drilling grill. And the kids come to me a lot of times, prepared for that and ready for that. Sometimes they're not ready for all the different learning styles and all the different kind of activities, because they're so used to learning in one specific way. But I believe that when they leave here, they're better learners and more diverse learners, and they're more skilled at being flexible and adaptable based on what kind of lesson is being presented.
The winner of the 2018 G. Flanagan Award, donated by Mr. Brooke Rockford, Texas GMC, and the UMBL ISD Elementary and District Teacher of the Year is Amanda Kopp.
We saw her, and it was crazy, like we were like, our teacher got UMBL ISD Teacher of the Year, and she deserves it, she deserves every bit she gets.
And I keep saying, "Who wins a car?" And every single person has said, "You do, you want a car."
I just love the environment, and I think Ms. Kopp's like the best teacher ever.
You're gonna be adding and subtracting fractions to find out how much of each slime ingredient you need.
She'll put a game, and it has little aspect of math or science or reading in it, and it kind of disguises that we're learning or reviewing.
I contacted the middle school teachers, and they said, "We really need our sixth graders to come in strong with fractions." So today, what we're doing is solving fraction operations to earn ingredients to make slime. So when a student gets the problem correct, it gives them the amount of food coloring they need, or the amount of glue they need to make the slime. I find that when I make a lesson fun, they're excited, they're thankful, and that causes their learning to increase.
When we're doing fractions, I draw my attention more to the fun thing, but it also helps to have something fun and the fraction, so when you combine them, it really helps to learn better. It sinks my brain into what we're doing.
I was taught that classroom management means all the kids are sitting quietly, they have their heads looking at their paper, and they're writing, and it's just not, it's been proven that that's not the most effective way for children to learn.
She loves her job, and that's what makes her so great. She's just, she's amazing.
Please help me recognize Amanda and Daniel, who are here tonight with us. You are providing your students with opportunities to develop the portrait of a graduate skills that they will use their entire lives. We are so proud to have you represent UMBL ISD and the teaching profession. I know, right? Okay. Many UMBL ISD staff members are now on a well-deserved summer break. Therefore, Super Staff recognizes will be back in October, when we have been back in school for at least a month. Next, I would like to introduce our Athletic Director Troy Kite, who's going to recognize some exemplary athletes from Atascida High School.
I have two awards that we would like to present and recognize tonight. The first one, we would like Christian Gilmore and his family and Coach Todd Simmons to come up to the front at this time, please. If I could have Dr. Fagan, Mr. Cunningham, if I could have y'all come down. A little background on Christian, when you start out the first race of the year and you win it, that's a great way to start. And then you win the second one, and the third one, and you get to district and you win it, and you've been undefeated to that point, the pressure starts to build. Then you go to the area meet, you win it, and you go to regionals and you win it, and you have a chance to compete at the University of Texas in front of 15,000 people, and I'm very proud to introduce you to the 2018 800-meter gold medalist, Christian Gilmore, with a time of 1:52.56. To go through your senior season, win a gold medal, and not lose a single race is quite an achievement. Congratulations, Christian. Christian will, and we wish him the best of luck at the University of Houston, so he'll be close, so we'll get a chance to see him run in the future. Thank you very much. The next group that we'd like to recognize is the Atascasita softball team. If you haven't followed this group of ladies, then you've probably lived under a rock. But the last couple of months has been an amazing ride. To see what these young ladies have done has been quite an accomplishment. They finished the year as co-district champions with another UMBL ISD school. See, see how I did that, Ash? See, you're proud, right? They finished with a 13-1 district record, they went 12-3 in the playoffs, and when they got to the state meet, they had a really tough opening game, won that, and then I would like to crown the 2018 6A State Softball Champions, Atascasita High School. That is the first team state championship at Atascasita, and is the only state championship that UMBL ISD has won in softball. Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations, ladies.
Next, I'd like to introduce JP Byrd, Director of Transportation, as he has a special announcement regarding our Transportation Department.
Good evening, Mr. President. Board members, Dr. Fagan, cabinet members in our community. It's with great honor that I get to announce that for the fourth consecutive year, we have placed in the top 100 fleets in the Americas. This year, we ranked number 14 out of 38,000 eligible government entities. We're also very proud to announce that UMBL ISD is the highest-ranked public school district in the top 100 Americas. Please also allow me to recognize two technicians who excelled in this year's America's Best School Bus Technician Annual Skills Competition, Jared Jacobs and Jovan Jackson, who placed first and third respectively. With his first-place state qualifying win, Jared once again, for the second consecutive year in a row, qualifies for the national championship. He'll be competing this October in Kansas City, Missouri, at the National America's Best Competition. Personally, guys, thank you very much. It's service and commitment like this that promotes us in this top 100 competition, so thank you. It is my honor to present the board with our new fourth-year-in-consecutive updated banner displaying our accomplishment for the Administration Board. So, couldn't have asked for a better team. Thank you.
And finally, I would like to invite Wood Creek Middle School Assistant Principal Jeff Ghostin will now come to the podium to thank the sponsor of specialized programming at their school.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Ghostin, Assistant Principal at Wood Creek Middle School. I am here on the behalf of our Principal, Mr. Applegate, in his absence. Joining me at the podium is Mr. Eric Colazo, a Wood Creek parent, Wood Creek students, Lorenzo Colazo, and Andrea Ramirez. Wood Creek Middle School students have the opportunity to take part of karate and earn a PE credit. We are very fortunate to have this program at our campus. We are the only school in UMBL ISD with this program. It is called Kickstart Kids. Showbiz Cinema has contributed over $60,000 a year to help provide Kickstart Kids at Wood Creek Middle School. At this point in time, we would like to have Mr. Colazo to come and say a few words.
Good evening. I just wanted to talk on behalf of the parents of Wood Creek Middle School, because this program is excellent. You know, especially if your kid is not very athletic, it's a great option. My son has never taken karate before, and he started taking it, and he loves it. He's not only learning the sport, but he's also learning values such as discipline and respect. So I'd like to thank the board for allowing this program to take place. I want to thank Showbiz Cinema for sponsoring the program, and Mr. Mark Bell, who's a terrific instructor, who's leading the school. Thanks.
We would like to thank Mr. Rob Warren, COO of Showbiz Cinema, Mr. Cassidy Clark, Sales Manager of Showbiz Cinema, Mr. Derek Stinson, Kickstart Kids Regional Manager, and Mr. Mark Bell, Wood Creek Middle School Kickstart Karate Instructor. We would like to present these plaques as a token of our appreciation for supporting Wood Creek Middle School with these specialized programs.
That concludes our accommodations and recognitions for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Now we'll move into questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters that are related to public education. Let me first say that the board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees, anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so following the procedures outlined on the agenda. The board asks that the comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than five minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue is mentioned, is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until appropriate time during that meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with board policy. Each of these processes provide that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal to the administrative decision to the board as properly posted on the agenda item. Copies of the district's agenda of the policies or participation in the meetings following complaints are available on the UMBL ISD website. Our first person that we'll have up will be Carla Kelly. There you go, right there, Ms. Kelly. Ms. Dixon, the parliamentarian, you'll keep track of the time?
Yes.
Good evening.
Three of whom graduated from...
Three of whom graduated from UMBLE High School, and I have three more who will also continue their education in UMBLE ISD. I'm here tonight because there's been a great deal of talk concerning arming Texas teachers and staff. And as a parent, I have to make it very clear that I, along with many others, don't want this to happen in UMBLE ISD. Governor Abbott's School and Firearms Safety Action Plan for Texas school districts include an expansion of the school marshal program, which allows teachers and other staff to carry guns inside schools. For the safety of our educators and our students, we urge you not to adopt this plan. Guns don't belong in schools. Schools are meant to be a place of sanctuary, of safety, and learning for our children. The presence of guns introduced an unpredictable and deadly element that puts students and educators at risk. It also layers even more safety concerns. Furthermore, there's simply no evidence that arming teachers will make schools safer. Liability, the liability is exponential. It increases exponentially because insurance also recognizes these risks. You have those districts who will allow this policy to be enacted in their schools, they're either refused coverage, or their premiums are raised when they allow their employees to carry guns. Experts in education and law enforcement agree that more guns in schools can increase volatility and risk. The American Federation of Teachers, the National Education Association, and the Major Cities Chiefs Association have expressed opposition to arming teachers. Research indicates the presence of guns in schools make children less safe. Students may know where teachers keep firearms, and we all know kids get information when even adults can't get information, and they can access those firearms. It increases suicide rates. It triples that, and then it also doubles the risk of death by homicide. So, arming civilians is just not an effective way to stop active shooters. Law enforcement officers are extensively trained, and when they get in a crisis situation, it's almost like muscle memory for them. Civilians are not. In other 160 active shooter incidents, only one, only one, was found to have a successful civilian intervention, and he was a trained Marine. If lawmakers want to prevent school shootings, they must adopt proactive, common-sense solutions to prevent people with dangerous histories from obtaining guns in the first place. One way we can save lives is to support red flag laws, which Governor Abbott also recommends. And research shows that in at least 42% of mass shootings, the attacker exhibited dangerous warning signs before the shooting occurred. Red flag laws allow loved ones and law enforcement to petition a court to have a person's access to guns temporarily suspended when they're found to be a threat to themselves or others. And red flag laws would empower them to intervene before an active shooter situation even occurs. I thank you again for your time. My name is Carla Kelly, and I am a proud volunteer of Moms Demand Action.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next, we'll have Dr. Olano Day. And forgive me, doctor, if I butchered that name there.
Good evening, everybody. My main goal of coming here today is about every of our children. You're gonna be wrong for the UMBLE school district to be putting on qualified, satisfied teacher in a class. I came here, I'm in Nigeria, and if you don't know today, go and Google it. We are the most educated people in the United States of America. When I came into the United States, I was delivering Houston polls. They showed that I went to critical, but I didn't give up my education. If you think you're gonna be putting a teacher that doesn't qualify, you got a problem with me. You are the future of our country. Encountered so many things with my son in middle school. There was this program they used to call First in Mass. I liked to do it every day. I like to get a badge, to wear it. Even to the extent he scored the highest point, they would deny him of the badge. Are we encouraging students or discouraging them? Is that what the UMBLE school district is all about? So, and this is great, Wood Creek Middle School. I, teacher, they don't grade him, homework. Is that what all UMBLE school district is all about? Even when he was in the elementary school, lecture elementary school, all his assignment, they would be backing it wrong. I'll be putting aside. I call, my son said, "My daddy is a doctor." They said, "I don't care." When I can't study no more, I call the Supertended Elementary School. We met in lecture, they apologized to me. I told the Supertended, "If I don't go to school, are you gonna mess up this boy's life?" Oh, they give us skills, this interim grading there. Are we gonna be paying our tax money to people that don't want to do the job, they just want the salary? Please, we need to do something to this. And again, in the middle school, I met a teacher called Miss Young.
Sir, sir, excuse me. Mr. President, point of order.
Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
We are not allowed to name any students or teachers in this discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pardon me, sir. We can continue this in closed session, if you would like to.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Or you can continue without mentioning names.
So, the teacher, when my son comes back, I say, "Where's the homework?" They didn't grade it, and I said, "Why?" I get in touch with the teacher to be able to help my son. She refused to help me. I have to go to the school and see the principal. The language the principal used for me is that, "Oh, you want to be a partner." Sounds not sensible to me. I say, "Yes, I want to be a partner in my son's life." Let me put it to you. Up till today, they didn't help my son. First grade to ninth grade, when the student need to understand education. If a teacher get qualification, certification for eighth and 12th grade, what is he doing in sixth grade class? So, these are the things. We don't need to put somebody there because it's our relative or our cousin. We need to put a qualified person there, especially in math and English and science. Please, please, you need to call your HR department. If somebody doesn't qualify, he doesn't have a math degree, and he wants to teach math, it's gonna be difficult. They just did the certification to pass just for bearing passing sake. This teacher I'm talking about, her first appointment in the UMBLE district is English. But you know, people run into English. But when she can't get her appointment in the maths, she went, in the English department, she went to math. Her certification is eighth to 12th grade, not sixth graders, not seventh graders. Please, I will not stop. I will take your district to the cops. I am not joking. If you think your old style of saying, "Black people don't go to school," you need to erase it now. I'm in Nigeria.
Sir, you have one minute to wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Olano. Okay. Next, we'll have individual comments by board members, and I will start to my right, your left, and Mr. Carney.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. I wanted to start by congratulating Mr. Green and Ms. Kopp on your achievements. That's really awesome. We really appreciate having you guys as members of our district. HS softball team, I think everyone, you know, district-wide was really just blown away, just really, really, really happy with everything that you guys accomplished. First state championship for Atascita High School overall. I mean, what an accomplishment, way to go. Also, I wanted to congratulate the Transportation Department as well. I think we focus a lot of time on academics and then sports as well and other things. But you guys are kind of unsung heroes in terms of taking care of our facilities and taking care of all the behind-the-scenes, you know, things that make our district function. And so, we really, really appreciate what you guys do, and it's really impressive that there's been continued success. So, thank you. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carney. Mr. Lopez.
Just to piggyback off of Mr. Carney, those congratulations, you're great teachers. Thank you for your work and your excellence. Make a difference in so many kids' lives, and we're lucky to have you in our district. And as for the softball team, I was able to follow along on Texan Live, thank goodness, and some exciting games, and it was better than the Astros, and it's saying a lot. Just congratulations, and we are very, very, very proud of you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Ms. Sitten.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Amanda and Daniel, awesome job. You know, I follow you all on Twitter and on Facebook and so forth. We're tickled to death to have you and represent our school district. Want to also congratulate all the finalists that were honored at the Foundation Gala. Want a special shout-out to Texan GMC, Texan Drive. They've been our car sponsor the last few years, and Amanda was the proud recipient of one of those this year. So, as far as AHs softball, I didn't want it to end, but I'm glad it ended the way it did, and you about gave me a heart attack against Katie. Gave me a heart attack again in Austin. And so, but I'm glad I was able to make those trips, and y'all made us proud. We're very proud of y'all and your representation of our school district in Atascita High School. The boys' baseball also went pretty deep. We had three softball teams, four baseball teams go deep in the playoffs. Kingwood Park got beat in the state semifinals in Round Rock. The Lone Star Cup ratings will come out, I believe, on the 17th, if I'm not mistaken. And going into softball and baseball, Kingwood Park was number five in the state, and they'll get points for both of those. I don't know if they're gonna be able to make up the gap, but I think they could end up in second or third in the Lone Star Cup. Is Coach Kite still here? Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay, so they're gonna be close. We'll see what happens when that comes out. And then, last but not least, the last two shout-outs. Our good friend from the city of UMBLE, Mr. Norman Funderburke is here in the audience. We appreciate all your support. And we have some Boy Scouts here. What's our troop number? 1174, stand up. Thank y'all for being here. That's not very Coon, is it? One of my classmates from back in the day from UMBLE High School. Thank y'all, thank y'all for being here. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Ms. Dixon.
Well, first, I'd like to ditto a lot of what my colleagues shared, and congratulations to Ms. Kopp and Mr. Green. I love to hear the wonderful things that you guys are doing, and I really like that learning style assessment you do at the beginning of the year. Congratulations to all of our 2018 high school graduates. Graduation Day was phenomenal. I truly enjoyed the entire experience. A long day, but worth it, it was so wonderful. Everyone that came up to you, they were smiling and excited, so what better thing? 2,000 students smiling, excited to move on. Congratulations to the Atascita High School softball team, state champs. So proud, and I heard all the metal clanking earlier. It was very nice to hear. And also, congratulations to Christian Gilmore for winning the goal in the 800. Last, I would like to say to our former Madam President, Angela Conrad, it has been a pleasure to serve my first year on the board under your leadership, and I'd like to thank you. And that is it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dixon. Ms. Morrison. Yeah, I'm saving Angela for last.
All right. Well, kudos to Amanda and Daniel. I just want to take a ride in your Jeep, and I want to go on your trip with you. But thank you so much for being some of those wonderful teachers that we have, okay? And well-deserved, and enjoy. Also, AHs, I want you to know, we were watching onstage. I believe you were playing, was, am I correct? Or was that K, that was K-Park? But I want you to know, this one, okay, I don't know. We watched so many games.
We were, we were.
And I have to say, but I've never seen a, Mr. Sitten next door, he was going to make sure that he was at those games. So, but congratulations to all of you. And I know some of you are probably going on and playing again, and I know we were able to shake your hand, those of you that were seniors, but so exciting. I don't think I ever got that far, but I did play softball. Kudos to the Transportation Department. Thank you for keeping us in the top 100, and what a wonderful staff you've got. I mean, we can't be prouder. And I, like Mrs. Dixon, graduation was awesome. It is a long day, but it is so exciting to see all those smiles and so much excitement about to go in all different directions. So, congratulations to that. And like I say, it's been a great year, and it's going to be an even greater year.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. And I'm gonna go ahead and go step in real quick and just have a few thank yous and congratulations, of course, to the AHs softball team. Congratulations, great job, well done. To our Transportation Department, consecutive running years here. Excellent job, just keep up the good work. I want to thank all the speakers that came out tonight and spoke on their various issues. Appreciate it. Wanted to say thank you once again to Mr. Funderburke, who now will say mayor pro tem. Congratulations, sir, and know you'll do us well in UMBLE. And I want to just sit here and just really just thank, really my board members first, but then just thank all of this year's committee chairs. We've got some work to do. Your community is looking at us, and so I'm looking forward to an exciting year with what's ahead for us. And then lastly, I want to just say a special thank you to our past president, Angela. I mean, you know, we've, between you and Dr. Fagan, going through Hurricane Ike and all the things that we have, with Harvey, you know, I just left a meeting and we're talking about what's in the Gulf, you know, and so. They were going through the thing, Allison, Ike, you know, I'm like, okay, you know, Rita. And there's something out there, right? I'm just telling them, like, hey, man, if we get five inches of rain, we're flooding. So, anyway. But yeah, through Harvey, which is still on my mind too. But I just wanted to just say thank you for your leadership. Appreciated everything between the two of you and keeping us involved and what's going on with the district. And just about, I don't know if I can measure up. You went just about everywhere. It's gonna be tough on me. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Well, I didn't really have any comments. Y'all kind of covered everything, but thank you for the congratulatory remarks, and it was an experience, a learning experience for sure. I thought it was a jinx at first, obviously, through a natural disaster, a snowstorm, but we ended on a high, so it all balances out, right? I don't have any additional comments.
All right, thank you. Dr. Fagan?
Thank you. Well, first, I wanted to say congratulations to the board on your HEB award that is posted up there. I couldn't remember if I said that last month or not, but to be awarded the board of the entire state is quite an accomplishment. And so, I just want to say congratulations to you, well-deserved recognition. Beyond all of that, I just wanted to mention that we have thousands of teachers who have completed a very long year with all of us this year. A very challenging year professionally, personally, in so many different ways, who took off like a day, and now they're right back with Dr. Johnson at the Power Possibilities at Summer Creek High School, learning and engaging work to prepare for the next school year. And so, my message is thank you to all of those teachers who could have said, "You know, I think I could use a few days off," and instead said, "No, I'm excited to learn and grow and prepare and have this opportunity so that when the fall comes..." prepare and, and have this opportunity so that when the fall comes, I'll be ready to go for my students. And that is just one more thing that, you know, is not something we're measured on, right? It's not something people look at, but it is absolutely an indicator of the quality of the teaching staff in this school district. And part of the reason that Umbel I C is the very best place for students and it is a family, could not be more proud of so many different departments. And thank you, J P, for all the work that you all do in transportation. We're not competitive at all, but it is nice to be the highest ranked K-12 system in the country. We'll take that. And we want to stay there now, so that's, that's just a bar that you're set for yourself. But thank you. No, seriously though, I hope that, that you all have the opportunity to see over the coming months, the level of accomplishment regardless of the part of the organization. Thousands of teachers taking professional development right now, fleets, mechanics who are rated in the state. Across our school district, we have really incredible folks. And so, I'm very proud to serve as the superintendent here and I want to say thank you to the board for making all of it possible. It absolutely does start at the top. And so, the work that you do, the service that you offer this school district, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Next, we'll move right on into our board committees and start with the Audit Committee. Myself as chair, along with Ms. Dixon and Mr. Carney. Board members, you have the report coming for June with the stats. If you have any questions, please see either one of the board member, committee members or Dr. Fagan or Ms. Fashon. That sums that up. Next, we'll go into the, any questions? Seeing none. Next, Board Superintendent Evaluation Process Committee, Goals. Mr. Lopez.
No update.
Okay. Next, Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Robert Sitten, Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, you as well as Ms. Dixon served on that committee with me. You all should have gotten an update from our last meeting, a couple of the highlights. Westlake Middle School has been completely closed in. All the utilities are working. The A C is working and we're not having to pay for that electricity bill yet. So, we were given assurance at that last meeting that the classrooms will be turned over to the school district and to the teachers on July fifteenth to begin getting ready for the next school year. Let's see. Furniture delivery will begin next week and the furniture will be housed in the, in the two gyms on that campus. So, that's staying on, on schedule. Summer construction, a lot of stuff going on. The AstroTurf is, the fields are going under their renovations right now. We still have, Kingwood Park's pool is going through some renovations. K Park Swimming will be held at Umbel High School this summer. Let's see. The Agmarne, the Agmarne Land, we've got some due diligence. We're still working on, on that. The I S C building is coming along smoothly. Don't have, didn't have everything ready to go right off the, the beginning of the summer, so they've moved the Power Possibilities to Summer Creek High School. And thank y'all for your flexibility there and understanding, but we're close. We're really close there. Elementary twenty-nine, that land was closed on in Lakeside Pines. So, that will be going under construction soon. That is a project from two thousand eight, from the two thousand eight bond referendum, as you may remember. We've got vestibules being built, new fire alarms going in. The Welcome Center is on track and looks fantastic. Drove by there last week. Furniture has been ordered for it as well. Let's see. And outside of that, I will withhold any other comments for later.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Education Foundation, Mr. Carney.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. So, the Education Foundation just concluded a very successful year and there's gonna be some changes that are going to be happening within the Executive Board. We had an Executive Board meeting on Monday. So, in, in those changes, one, one change will be that Jen Sitten will be stepping down as Chair. She's been serving for the past two years. Her relentless commitment to the foundation and Umbel I C has been evident in all that she does. We are grateful for her leadership, her passion, and most of all, her never ending enthusiasm. So, we wanted to thank Jen Sitten for all of her service to the foundation. As we look to the two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen school year, we're going to welcome Ms. India Loth as the Chair of the Foundation. India's served the Foundation Board since two thousand thirteen and we look forward to her giving the foundation, or her guiding the Foundation forward over the next two years. And the rest of the Executive Board for two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen will be Jim Karanza as the Vice Chair. Ms. Jen Sitten will stay on the Executive Board as a Treasurer. Dr. Fagan will be the Secretary. I will retain my position as the School Board Liaison and we'll have two at-large positions with Bonnie Longian and Mike Field. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Finance Committee, Mr. Sitten.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, and as well, you and Ms. Conrad served on that committee with me. We had our budget workshop last week, or two weeks ago now, and we approved an average of two percent raise for all teachers and staff. We also increased our starting teacher salary to fifty-four. Fifty-four, five? Fifty-four, four. Starting teacher salary of fifty-four, four. We adjusted that hiring schedule up and everyone's gonna get a little extra in their stocking this year. So, thank you all for supporting the recommendation and we'll have our budget hearing coming up Tuesday, Tuesday night to approve the budget. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sitten, and, and also thank you for your continued leadership on the Finance Committee. Definitely appreciate it, sir. Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council, Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Just a few things. First of all, the Jesse Jones Park is back open and running for all summer programs. I found out tonight that only a portion of San Jacinto River is going to be dredged. But anyway, the dredging begins this month. It will go on twenty-four, seven, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I'll try to get more information on that at the next meeting on what portions of the river will be dredged. The design for the North Park Drive Improvement in Kingwood will begin this summer and tentatively, the construction will begin in twenty twenty. And then, the Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council, we are off this summer. Our next meeting will be at the end of August. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Ms. Morrison, Legislative.
Thank you. As you know, Legislative is changing to Advocacy for eighteen nineteen and so, we actually have no report for legislation tonight, but for the future, our Advocacy meeting group, Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Sitten will be with me on that. And we are changing it and we will be inviting membership from the city of Umbel, Lake Houston Chamber, Lone Star College, Precinct Four, Harris County Sheriff, Dave Martin's office, Dan Huberty's office, Ted Poe's office, Brendan Creighton's office, our two hospital boards, Chief Cook, and then also our two hospital boards. And we will, we will have our first meeting on August twenty-seventh and we will have topics for these meetings and our first topic is safety and secure schools. So, we are sending out invitations. Mrs. Mount is preparing the invitations for membership and we're looking forward to some new things and some exciting things for our district.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison, and thank you for taking, taking that role on, continuing to all work with that Legislative and now Advocacy Committee. Okay, Ms. Dixon, we're gonna move into items, action items from closed session.
Okay. Mr. President, I move that the board approve the administration's recommendation of student expulsion following the appeal hearing conducted in closed session.
Have a second. We have a motion and a second. All have heard the motion. All in favor, say, raise your hand. Opposed by the same? Okay. Okay, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the administration's recommendation of student expulsions as otherwise presented in closed session.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed by the same? Thank you. Is there anything else?
Yes. Personnel recommendations.
There you go. You're still on.
Okay, Mr. President, I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum if necessary.
Okay. You have a second, please. Okay, we do have a second. Okay. All in favor? Opposed by the same? Motion carries. Okay. Think you have one more? I'm showing.
Yes. I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendations to non-renew the term contracts of certain employees at the end of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen contract term for the reasons stated in Board Policy D F B B and authorize the superintendent to provide all appropriate notices and take necessary actions for the same. The employees are currently employed at the following campuses. Atascita High School, Elm Grove Elementary, Fall Creek Elementary, and Ridge Creek Elementary.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor? Hand. Okay, all opposed by the same? Motion carries. Okay. I believe that's everything from closed session. Okay, we're good. Let's move on into our consent agenda and as we stated earlier, you know, we're able to get this information a couple of days ahead, so if we have any questions, we can ask administration, they can provide the answers. So, Ms. Dixon, I'm gonna ask if you will kind of keep a tally for me.
Yes.
As we go into our agenda. First on the line is gonna be under six A, the approval of minutes from May, May eighth, two thousand eighteen of the regular board meeting of the trustees. Consent, approval of minutes from the May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen special meeting. Okay, and then on, on eight, you want to pull it or you just want to just abstain? We have to vote? Okay, just abstain. Let's pull it.
Six B?
Yeah. Got you. All right. Thank you, Ms. Sitten.
That would be six B, Mr. Sitten?
Six B. Okay. Six C, approval of minutes from.
Okay.
Okay, C, pull C. Okay, D, approval of minutes from the May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen special meeting, Board of Trustees. Okay, that's consent. D, Budget Transfer Amendments, Capital Projects. Consent. F, Tax Refunds. Okay, Consent. G, Waiver of P and I. Consent. Okay, H, Construction and Construction Related Purchases. Okay, that's a consent. I, Synthetic Field Turf at all high schools, Turner Stadium, Softball and Baseball. That's consent. J, is the Resolution for Alternative, Alternative Graduation Requirements. Okay, Consent. K, we have an interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement, TIPS, from Region Eight. Consent. We have another interlocal agreement, L, with the Harris County Department of Education for D A E P. Consent. Six M, Quest, Early College, High School, interlocal agreement. That's consent. N, interlocal agreement with Region Five, Education Center. Consent. O, Dual Course Credit Partnership Agreement. Consent. P, Memorandum, Memorandum of Understanding with Lone Star College for Emergency Evacuation Location. Okay, Consent. You go down to Q, Policy Revisions. Okay, that'll be a consent. R, Goods, Professional Service, Non-Construction Services Exceeding Fifty Thousand in the Aggregate or Twenty-five Thousand Individually. That's consent. Okay. And if you will, read that back to me in the form of a motion.
Okay, Mr. President, I move that the board approve the following items by consent. Six A, Six D, Six E, Six F, Six G, Six H, Six I, Six J, Six K, Six L, Six M, Six N, Six O, Six P, Six Q, and Six R.
Hey, may I have a second, please? Go ahead. Then properly motion, all averted motion. All in favor, raise your hands. All opposed by the same? Consent agenda is approved. Six S. Okay, now, let's go back. Now, first item on the consent is B. May I have a motion, please? Second, somebody? Okay, good. We got a second. All right. And that's for a vote and I, Mr. Sitten's already expressed that, so all have heard the motion. All in favor of it, raise your hands.
It's the canvas?
No. Yeah, that, that is the canvas. Yes, sir. Yeah, that's the canvas. Okay. All right. Six one, one abstention. Okay, next, this will be the minutes, Mr. Lopez from the meeting on the twenty-four, special meeting of the Board of Trustees, Breakfast with the Board. Okay, may I have a?
So moved.
All right. Then second. Discussion, not seeing none, we know why. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Okay. All right, board members, let me move on down here. I tell you. Oh, we do have an action item here.
Yes.
This one. Okay. Action item number seven, Order Authorizing the Assurance of Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series two thousand eighteen and Related Actions. May I have a motion here?
So moved.
All right. Have a second. All right. Vote, okay. So, everybody's read the information, got it, all in favor of it? Raise your hand. Is there, is there any?
Let's discuss this real quick, just so everybody, everybody knows.
Yield to you, Mr. Finance Chair.
So, there was a lot of, a lot of questions after the bond referendum was passed. Is the district gonna jump out and start paying, selling bonds and paying interest on five hundred seventy-five million and so forth? As we explained numerous times, that we will only sell bonds as we have capacity to do so. This vote that we're about to take is to give the authority to sell up to, not to exceed a hundred and fifty million. That does not mean that we have to sell a hundred and fifty million. It means we have capacity for a hundred and fifty million. Based on interest rate changes, the Fed meeting started today and tomorrow. We don't know what interest rates are gonna do on the short term, but as we prepare to go out to the market on those, our Bond Advisory Council and our CFO will be meeting regularly and then coming back to the Finance Committee with what they're doing as a final resolution. But what we're doing tonight as a board is giving them the authority to go up to a hundred and fifty million marketplace if interest rates are favorable, et cetera, et cetera. Okay?
Any other comments? All in favor? Thank you.
The information file, so, if there's any questions. And on that, you can definitely get with Dr. Fagan, get with Mr. Seal or our Finance Chair, Mr. Sitten. Guess now we're gonna go in closed session, so we're gonna reconvene. We're gonna reconvene. The board's gonna reconvene back into closed session and we want to thank everyone. You're free to stay if you want. We want to thank everyone for coming out tonight.